Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Redkey.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Before we get started tonight, I do want to just make a brief announcement. We recently lost a longtime volunteer supporter of the city of Sterling Heights, John Patron, who had been on boards and commissions in the past and was, as I said, a longtime supporter of the city of Sterling Heights. And he died unexpectedly recently, and I think it would be appropriate just to take a brief moment of silence in recognition of him and for all of his contributions to making Sterling Heights a better place to live. Council, we need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some very exciting news to share with city council and the audience this evening. And that includes a grant that we just received notice of today that we'll be receiving from the federal government, Department of Transportation. And I'd like to draw your attention to the screen so I can walk through some of the numbers. This is for Mound Road. So this will be for the complete reconstruction of Mound Road from 696 all the way up to M-59. The total project scope is $185 million. So you could imagine this is going to be a major project. This will be the largest road project in the area in many years, and the largest in Macomb County in the history of the county. So let's look at the numbers. The federal grant that we were just informed that we'll be receiving from the Department of Transportation equates to $97,864,565. And you can see moving through the list here, Macomb County has a local share of just over 43 million, which they have set aside funding, and this money is available. The city of Sterling Heights, our share is just over 29 million. We have set aside this funding, and we have this funding in place and ready to go. The city of Warren is contributing just over $14 million because they only have three miles of Mound Road compared to our six miles of roadway. So the total construction then takes us to just over, as I mentioned, $184 million. So let me talk a little bit about what all this work will entail. First of all, it's going to incorporate a lot of state-of-the-art technology, interconnected vehicle technology, obviously state-of-the-art signalization that can respond in real time based on traffic flow patterns. The various bridges along the roadway will have electronic spray monitoring systems in place for inclement weather. There'll be walkways that go over Mound Road, one at the Tech Center and one up by Metro Parkway. There'll be all-new unified lighting and iconic signage throughout the corridor in addition to vastly improved landscaping, similar to some of our more recent projects. So this is a concept of what the roadway will look like eventually when construction starts in just a couple of years and then is finished up in 2022 or 2023. So just by way of background, this process started about a year and a half ago when three entities entered into an inter-local agreement to share costs not to exceed $150,000 to apply for this grant. Of course, the entities were Macomb County, Sterling Heights, and the city of Warren. The purpose of the inter-local agreement and the sharing of the $150,000 was to conduct stakeholder meetings to launch the initiative, which was widely publicized by the media. We had to hire a grant writer, who was Bill Henke, an attorney based in Washington DC, whom the city had already had a partnership with from the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant Initiative a few years ago, when that was announced for closure, and we had to go through an effort to coerce Chrysler into purchasing that project facility out of bankruptcy. We also had to create a website for this initiative, had to establish an executive committee, conduct an economic impact analysis of the entire corridor, which ended up confirming that the economic impact of the Sterling Heights-Warren Corridor is over $8 billion in terms of economic impact to the entire region. We had to prepare preliminary engineering plans, coordinate and organize effort involving businesses throughout the corridor. We had to travel to Washington DC to meet with White House officials, Department of Transportation officials, and congressional leaders. Our grant was submitted last October, and there were pretty regular, ongoing lobbying efforts, if you will, throughout the entire time, up until today, actually. So the next step in this process is that Congress now has 60 days to review the grant approvals from the Department of Transportation. We fully expect that Congress will approve certainly the Mound project, in large part because there is strong bipartisan support from our entire congressional delegation, including Senator Peters, Senator Stabenow, Congressman Mitchell, and Congressman Levin. Assuming Congress approves the Mound Road grant, construction will commence 18 months later, or approximately January 1, 2020. Obviously, Mound Road cannot survive two more winters, so the resurfacing project from 14 and 1/2 to 18 mile will still proceed starting next month. The cost of the temporary resurfacing is less than 5% of the overall reconstruction of Mound Road. So by 2022 or thereabout, Mound Road will be state-of-the-art and a road corridor in our city for which we can all be very proud of, which will serve us well for at least the next 30 to 35 years. And I wanted to just take a minute to thank all the entities that were involved in this incredibly collaborative team effort. The city of Sterling Heights, the city of Warren, Macomb County, the Innovate Mound Executive Committee, SEMCOG, MDOT, Senator Peters, Stabenow, Congressman Paul Mitchell, and Congressman Sandra Levin, Department of Transportation, and Secretary Chow, Bill Henke, our grant writer, Bonner Advisory Group that was very involved in the effort, Hoyt and Creative, who helped with the webpage, and also Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, who was instrumental in putting together the engineering plans, cost-benefit analysis, the concept drawings, and the like. And for those of you who'd like more information on this incredible project, that will certainly be one of the largest we've ever seen, you can go to innovate mound.org to see much more information and see all the details. But I found the news to be incredibly pleasing today, and I also wanted to thank the mayor and our city council, who have been incredibly supportive throughout the entire process and helped push it over the finish line. And the last item on my report, Mayor, not quite as exciting, is that at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. One brief item. I'd be remiss if I didn't, I think, on behalf of the entire city council, I can say this, thank the efforts of Mark Vanderpool and the city administration for what they did. This was a team effort, and no one person, I think, made this possible. But if I had to look to one person, it would be Mark Vanderpool. Really, when you look at this project, the scope of what's going to be happening, Mr. Vanderpool was instrumental in bringing this to our attention, to the county's attention, and to the city of Warren's attention. And I frankly don't think it happens without his leadership, so I wanted to give him that recognition. And as he said, he's very diplomatic, and he's not wrong. I don't think just any one person alone could have gotten this done. And it really was a testament to what we can accomplish when we all work together. When people from different parties and different walks of life, and the public sector and the private sector work together towards a common goal, it really shows what can be accomplished. And we're going to transform Mound Road from the worst road in the state to the best. And that's no small feat. And, you know, everybody who worked on it deserves a lot of credit, but I think it's important to recognize you, Mark, for what you did, and we appreciate it. So thank you. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights police officers. Welcome our chief, Dale Dwojekowski, to the podium. Chief Dwojekowski.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Tonight, it feels like I was just here. Another four new officers for the Sterling Heights Police Department, and another fine batch of hires it is. This brings our total to 52 brand-new officers in three years. We only have 75 officers on the road, actual patrol officers. So 52 of those officers are now new in the last three years. So we are a new, new department. On the good side of this, we have hired some of the best candidates in the state of Michigan. I'll give more to that in a second. But tonight, I'd like to introduce to you, from my left to my right, Nathan Sears. Nathan is 24 years old, grew up in Elginak. He has one brother, one sister. His parents still live in Elginak. Nathan attended Elginak High School. He went on to obtain an associate's degree from Macomb and a criminal justice bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University in Sociology. He graduated in April from Grand Rapids Community College Police Academy, currently engaged, to be married. Good timing. Nathan was offered a conditional offer from Chesterfield Police Department, but he turned that offer down to take our job offer. Kyle Smith, to his right. Kyle is kind of family to us. Kyle's 26 years old. He grew up in Shelby Township. He comes to us with SHPD history. Kyle's father is Walt Smith. If you know Walt, he's one of our retired K-9 officers. I think him and his wife are in the crowd tonight.
Mm-hmm.
There they are, back there. So I've known Walt for a long, long time. We worked together, and I can't believe now I'm hiring his kid, which is crazy. So Kyle knows a lot about our police department. Kyle just graduated from the Macomb Police Academy in May, and he's worked up at Lakeside Mall doing security, so very familiar with our department and our community. He had an opportunity to go to Michigan State Police's Academy this year. He turned that offer down to come work for us in Sterling Heights. Daniel Watts, next to him, 24 years old, grew up in Girls Point. He attended Girls Point North High School. He went on to Michigan State University, got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He was employed with Detroit for one year, correct?
Yes.
More or less, a year. Until this May, he separated. He was offered a job with St. Clair Shores, and guess what? He turned that offer down to come work for Sterling Heights. And James Sribniak, to the far right. James is 25 years old, grew up in Almont. James attended Almont High School, got an associate's degree from Macomb Community College. He graduated from Macomb's Police Academy in the fall of 2017. James accepted a part-time job with Waterford with an offer of a full-time job, but guess what? James turned that job offer down to come work with us in Sterling Heights. So again, the theme tonight, it's a testament to Sterling Heights, our reputation, our financial solvency, the way the city is managed and run. These officers all knew the story before they even applied here. They knew that if there was one place to work for 25 years, it'd be Sterling Heights. And that comes for a lot of reasons. We have a lot of different divisions, bureaus. We're a very safe community. And when these guys are looking at 25 to 30 years of law enforcement in front of them, they want to work for a city that is managed correctly, run correctly, and is going to be here for them for that full 30 years. And they all chose Sterling Heights, and they all turned down other communities to come here. So we thank you, gentlemen. We got another great batch of guys. So without any other delays, we'll have the actual swearing-in.
I'll reach right ahead.
Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I'll strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
And I'll strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, guys. Any of you should come up and say a few words, Nathan, if you want to start.
Well, thank you, city council. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Dwojekowski. And last but not least, I want to thank my family, who's been so supportive of me throughout this entire process. It's true, I've heard nothing but great things about this city and this police department, and I could not be more excited to spend the rest of my career here. Thank you.
City council. Hello again. Hello again. I know a few of you. I'd like to say thank you again. I very much look forward to serving you, as well as the rest of you. I have to thank my family, of course, my father and my mother back there. And to go along with what Nathan said, we are looking forward to this beyond anything and everything else. Carry on strong tradition here, which is something that you don't find very many places. So I'd just like to say thank you again. Hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, to the city council chief, I'd just like to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation for the opportunity to work for the city of Sterling Heights. This is a department that I've long wanted to be a part of and to work for. To serve you guys and to serve the community is very, very special to me, something that I've wanted to do for a long time. So I'd also like to thank my family and my friends behind me. Without them, I would not be here today. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. Thank you, chief, for giving me the opportunity to work at this city. I'm really excited to be here. I'd like to thank my family. Without them, I wouldn't be here, you know, they supported me along this long journey. And I'm ready to start working for the city of Sterling Heights.
Again, I'd like to thank city council for your continued support of our police department and our mission to keep Sterling Heights one of the safest cities in the United States. And with your support, I know we'll continue to do that. And with that, I'd like to welcome all of you to come down and say hello to our newest hires.
Well, thank you very much, chief.
I didn't have any notes.
Council, open it up if there's anybody who wants to address these gentlemen. Anybody who wants? Well, I will just say, welcome aboard. Thank you for your service to the city of Sterling Heights, to the residents of Sterling Heights. I say it every time, but I think you'll find that this is a community that really appreciates the work that our police officers do. This is a city that will readily give the police department, the fire department, and those willing to serve us, whatever we can to make your job as easy as possible. And we are there. We have your back. We will support you, and we appreciate your service to us. We hear it all the time that Sterling Heights is a destination city. You obviously know that, as the son of a former officer here in Sterling Heights. You know the reputation that this department has, and it's your duty to uphold that reputation. And it's your duty to really provide the best level of service you possibly can to these residents. They deserve it, and we know you are up to the task. So we congratulate you, welcome you. Stay safe, keep us safe. And, you know, you say you hope to see us soon. I hope it's not, you know, too soon. I don't want to see you behind me when I'm not. Somebody else, maybe. Anyway, thank you so much. We appreciate your service, and let's give them one more big round of applause. Thank you again, chief. You can dismiss them, and you're free to go and take some pictures and celebrate with your family. So thank you again very much. Wait just a moment before we go on to the next item on our agenda tonight. We've got a new numbering system, I see here. So we're going to go on to item 7A, which is an ordinance introduction. This is to consider introduction of a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezone properties situated on the north side of 15 Mile Road, west of Ryan Road, in section 30 from R-60 to O-1, case number PG-18-0002. This is the Caldian Community Foundation. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Vanderpool. As you note, before you, tonight is a conditional rezoning, the potential introduction of that conditional rezoning, to rezone the property immediately adjacent to the existing Caldian Community Foundation to an O-1 designation to allow for the expansion of that building. The site is located on the north side of 15 Mile Road, west of Ryan Road. This potential addition would facilitate about a 15,605-square-foot addition with an 1,800-square-foot lobby addition connecting. As you can see on the screen here, I'll just go right to the graphics. The blue portion of the building here is the existing Caldian Foundation building. There'd be a walkway connection between, which would become the new entryway for the facility. And then this orange-brown color would be the new addition of the building itself. It would also include a courtyard between the two existing buildings. The proposal would also amend the current site plan to allow for additional parking on the existing, what's known as right now as a current existing site, would also provide an expansive amount of parking throughout the remainder of the proposed section of the site to alleviate some of the parking concerns that the Caldian Foundation has at their current location, just due to the fact that they provide such a good service and they've been so busy. I think maybe the petitioner, if he gets a chance to speak, might be able to attest to how successful they've been in the short amount of time they've been here in the city. The proposed addition would add for office space, learning areas, medical suites, and a multipurpose gymnasium area. The expanded building would be occupied during normal business hours, Monday through Friday. They would have an occasional special event held on either nights or weekends for the purposes only of the Caldian Foundation themselves. It wouldn't be necessarily a rental-type situation, so it would be no private-type use. The applicant indicates that the multipurpose room would be utilized for hosting receptions, or would not be used for hosting those things, but used for outreach activities, as well as some developmental functions, I believe, for those people that they serve through the foundation themselves. Again, I noted that the amount of parking would be increased to a total of about 185 parking spots, which is more than sufficient based on our ordinance calculations. They'd also have that outdoor seating area and significantly increase the amount of landscaping throughout the entire site itself. The planning commission did take this up at their April 12, 2018, meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed rezoning. Here's the elevations for the proposed expansion. If you go to the middle elevation here, this is the front facade. The front facade that stands now is on the right-hand side. This gray-colored area would be that walkway or connection between the two, the existing building and the proposed, and then the proposed building is over to the left-hand side of the screen here, basically mimicking the same architecture that's out at the site at this particular time. And then this is the actual floor plan. Again, the blue portion of the building, located to the right, that's the existing building, the walkway connection between the two, and then again, the proposed expansion showing a multitude of different uses within the overall building itself. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that city council may have.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Petitioner is here. Mr. Manah, would you like to, or any other representative like to speak?
Sure.
You've got it. Mr. Saroki.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Victor Saroki. We were the original architects for the building, working with Martin and the foundation. And as I think Chris has done a good job of giving you an overview of the project, parking has been an important issue at the facility because they have been so successful. So we went through quite a bit of effort to exceed the parking requirements by ordinance. And as Mr. McLeod said, we have over 185 parking spaces. Currently, we have 67. So we're almost, you know, tripling it. The building is almost doubling in size. It's actually a little bit more than doubling in size. We're moving the center entry to a new lobby location and making it a little more grand. But the architecture will remain the same aesthetic. It's an all-brick building. I think you can see that Martin maintains the facility very well. Hopefully, you've been there and seen how successful it is. And at the end of the day, we're using the same approach as the center approach, and we've added another approach to the west. We have exceeded the landscape requirements and provided a very nice buffer to the condos to the back as we did the first time. So we're extending the wall, the arboretum, and the trees. With that, I'll turn it over to Martin to talk a little bit about the operation. Hopefully, you've had a chance to be there as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city manager. It's very good to see you. I just want to start by really talking about what a phenomenal partnership we've had with the city. We opened this new facility in November 13 of 2015, really to help about 15,000 people a year. And if you haven't been to the center, the center is open to everybody. Almost 20% of our Walkins now are non-Caldian. And we are seeing this fiscal year, which will end September 30 for us, will probably see about 35,000 people. And so our services are geared to help those that, but we help with sustainability. So when we initially opened the facility in November of 2015, we had a couple hundred clients with developmental disabilities. That number is closer to 600 now. So one of the main reasons why we're expanding is to provide additional services, mainly for those with visual impairments, hearing impairments, and other types of developmental disabilities. So there'll be a life skills center that will be part of the expansion, and that center will, again, teach independence for those with developmental disabilities. We also have no additional space for our staff. We are hiring another 10 to 12 people, and currently, they're utilizing some common area in our current facility, and we've had some parking issues that we're working through. So financing is in place. We can move as quickly as you allow us to, and, you know, we're hopeful that you'll approve the rezoning.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Manah. We will call you up if we have any other questions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to introduce a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezone property situated on the north side of 15 Mile Road, west of Ryan, in section 30 from R61 Family Residential District to O1 Business and Professional Office District, case number PZ18-0002, and direct the petitioner to proceed to finalize a proposed agreement so that the City Council can further evaluate the offer of conditional rezoning of the property at the June 19, 2018 regular meeting. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Schmidt.
Just briefly, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, so is there going to be a brick wall around the perimeter of this property?
There'll be that plus some. There'll be a wall surrounding this to the north and to the west. Then between the wall and the foundation building itself, there'll be a significant row of arborvitae immediately adjacent to the wall. And then in front of that, as you can see on the drawing here, in most instances, then there'll be a periodic deciduous tree, back here, I would say is more than periodic, that will also provide separation. So they've well gone beyond separation there. There's duplexes to the north here. To the west is actually roadway, road right-of-way, so that will provide further separation to any residential units to the west.
Okay, I really have nothing more to say except that how impressed I am with your services and your outreach to the community as a whole. As you said, there's more than just the Caldian community that are benefiting from this, and I think it's wonderful that you're part of our community. So with that, I have nothing further.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt and Mrs. Arco.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. What you do and the services that you provide make us a better community. So you are an easy partner to work with because your success is our success. And I think we knew that when we visited the center when it first opened that you were going to need an expansion. Because, I mean, it was a beautiful facility, but we knew what you were doing and what your vision was, to help more people and to do more, that you were going to need more space, and it's soon to become a reality. And like I said, your success is our success, so I'm grateful for all that you do, and if there's more that we can do for you, please let us know.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just have one question, Mr. McLeod. I remember reading the packet, is there an issue with a fire truck being able to turn around behind the building? And if that, how are we going to solve that problem?
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department's usually pretty versatile in terms of getting a fire truck to be able to turn around, so they might have to do some sort of dedicated T-turn back there. So that can be handled during site plan review. Again, the fire department is always more than willing to work with us in terms of accomplishing that type of turn, so I don't foresee it being an issue.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Well, thank you, Martin, for, I don't think I, I don't have any real questions. Do you want to add something?
And I work with a lot of municipalities, and, you know, I'm not from Macomb, although I'm very entrenched in Macomb County now. And just a testament to the leadership here, it's been a pleasure working with Mr. McLeod and the city manager. And I will go out as far as say that I've never had such a wonderful experience with this city as I've had with the city of Sterling Heights. Not only are you guys welcoming, you're very professional, and it's been truly a pleasure for me and our community to continue to work here. And we have some wonderful things coming here in the near future that I'm hoping we could discuss shortly. So, thank you again.
Well, thank you very much, Martin. We appreciate your leadership. It goes without saying that you have been a tremendous advocate for the Caldian population in Metro Detroit, and we know in Sterling Heights, we have one of the largest populations in Michigan, and frankly, perhaps even in the entire United States or world outside of Iraq. And it's a point of pride, I think, for the community here to be opening, welcoming, and we try to do that. And, you know, when we see developments like this, I can remember going into your storefront. You know, it's hard to imagine that three years ago, you were in a storefront at 15 and Ryan, you know, that could have been a, it could have been a bakery, you know? It was not that large. And to see you're expanding like this is really remarkable, and we appreciate the development here in the city of Sterling Heights and your commitment to the city of Sterling Heights, and we wish you nothing but success. We really do, as my colleague said, your success is our success. When you are successful, it's to help acculturate people, to help them, it's to help provide skills so that they're able to go out into the workforce and be productive. It's so that they can, you know, coming from a foreign land where a lot of things are different, and we've talked about this, they need that bridge. And, you know, the city can do so much, and we want to help partner when we can, but to have you there to do that is really a great, great benefit to our residents. So thank you to the entire community, Caldian Community Foundation, and for their commitment to Sterling Heights. So this is, this has been moved and supported, and with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is another ordinance introduction, and this is to consider introduction of a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezone property situated on the south side of Lakeside Circle between Shoreline Drive and South Cove Drive in section 1 from O2 Planned Office District to RM3 Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise District, case number PZ17-0011. We have a presentation from our city planner, again, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Mr. Vanderpoel. Before you tonight is the conditional rezoning, potential introduction of that conditional rezoning to rezone the subject property from that O2 designation to the RM3 Multiple Family High-Rise designation. This proposal looks a little familiar to you, it probably should. We saw it just over a year ago here at council in a little different form. Since that time, since the original approval, the applicant has secured the property immediately to the east, and that's the subject of tonight's, the main subject of tonight's rezoning request, to basically develop a three-story, 72-unit facility. The previous facility was a 57-unit facility for senior living. This request does represent an amendment to the previous conditional rezoning as well. The proposed development includes the construction of a new senior living facility. Just real quickly here, then you can see on the map here, the property will now take up all vacant property on the south side of Lakeside Circle. And again, the zoning map there. Let's move down quickly to the actual site plan itself. The proposed development includes the construction of that new senior living facility, the associated parking green spaces, and the maintenance of the existing public access easement in favor of the city itself. There is a 10-foot easement along the western property line that was secured during the original rezoning that would still be in place for ultimately the city to provide a walkway and potentially bridge to Island Park, should the funds for that arrive, or should a development be able to provide us the funds to provide that bridge in that location. The unit configurations will include one- and two-bedroom suites. Each unit would have their own kitchenette and dining area. The building itself would be constructed still of brick and stone with lapboard siding, gabled roofs. We'll get to the elevations in one moment. The petitioner is also requesting several variants as part of this application, not unsimilar to what was being requested before, pushing the parking out a little bit towards the outer boundaries. And some of the parking areas have a little pinch point against the building itself where we have a setback requirement. But again, nothing any more drastic than what was previously approved in the previous version of this. This was taken up at the Planning Commission meeting of April 12, 2018 during their regular meeting. They did recommend approval of that essentially unanimously. Let me go real quickly to the elevations. The biggest thing, this spent several months at the Planning Commission. I just wanted to give you a little background to it. The applicant originally requested a four-story building to accomplish essentially 76 units. During the Planning Commission meeting, and due to Planning Commission review as well as some public input, the developer, through a number of iterations, determined that maybe four stories wasn't the way to go. They brought down the number of stories back to the originally approved three stories. But as you can see on the screen here, there's a projection coming towards you essentially. The applicant added that wing to the building to gain the additional units necessary to support the acquisition of the property to the east, but also to accommodate the residents and their desire to have a lower standing building. So I think that the developer, you know, listened to both the Planning Commission and the residents themselves, and really accommodated the development, you know, in a way that kept the architecture, kept the density necessary to make it viable, but also to meet everyone's needs. So with that, again, this is the introduction of, or potential introduction for this conditional rezoning from O2, our Planned Office District, RM3 Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise for the construction of this 72-unit, senior-oriented living development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLeod. As a petitioner in the audience, would like to make any comments?
I'm the petitioner, Frank Kiram. I live at 34457 Maple Lane Drive.
Can you pull the, just pull it down?
Oh, okay. Sterling Heights, Michigan.
Thank you.
And this is my attorney, he's representing us, Mr. Schimatero.
My name's Tom Schimatero, 42850 Garfield, Suite 1040, Clinton Township. Well, we were here last year, we had an opportunity to purchase the land that was next to it, so we resubmitted another plan. We came back several times to the Planning Commission because there were a lot of concerns of the citizens of Sterling Heights, and we went out of our way. We changed the plans to satisfy all of their concerns. The biggest concern was the height, and so we changed the height. We added additional landscaping, we had additional open areas, and so we put a project together that the citizens are satisfied with, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously for it. So I'm asking you to accept it. We think it'll be a win-win benefit for both us and the citizens of Sterling Heights and the citizens of Sterling Heights. If you've got any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schimatero. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Resolve to introduce a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezone property on the south side of Lakeside Circle between Shoreline Drive and South Cove Drive in section 1 from O2 Planned Office District to RM1 Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise District, case number?
RM3.
RM3, sorry, my mistake, my mistake. So RM3 Multiple Family Mid and High-Rise District, case number PZ17-0011, and direct petitioner to proceed to finalize a proposed agreement so that the City Council can further evaluate the offer of conditional rezoning of the property at the June 19, 2018 regular meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mr. Shannon?
Well, I guess I just have a question through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, my question is, is what is our vision, I guess, and I'm sure we have something in the master plan that discusses this, as far as what, I mean, we have seen recently, and there's been reports in the news about what our vision is overall for Lakeside Mall, but I'm curious as far as what is our vision for residential in that area?
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think realistically, residential will play a large role in the redevelopment of Lakeside. I think the intensification overall in all the use category, well, I shouldn't say all the use, commercial, office, and residential use categories will basically, is basically the vision that we have set forward in our sustainability plan. Most of you have seen that, most of the public has seen that. You know, that is a concept, it's not set in stone, but I think residential overall in the full gamut of residential, both in terms of millennials, the baby boomer generation, all the way up to the senior population, all those different categories will play the role of providing a more vibrant area. In the overall scheme of Lakeside, as large as it is, we're not just going to reconfigure Lakeside with a new commercial entity. It's going to take a multitude of different uses to do it, and this is one piece of that. You know, it's consistent right now with a lot of the uses around the ring, outside of the ring of Lakeside Circle, but would also provide support to the redevelopment of the inner ring in whatever form or shape that may take. So I think it plays a critical role, you know, in terms of providing additional population and critical mass in the Lakeside area.
And not to, I guess, not fully understand the residents that live on the outer area of the lake, but I guess what are their complaints? You know, I'm referring to the going from four floors to three floors. I mean, you're looking at a mall right now, as of right now.
Not to, I mean, I obviously can't speak for them, but I think basically what was conveyed to the commission was, you know, they felt that a four-story building may be overbearing to them. And, you know, we haven't got a lot into the size and massing of buildings within the Lakeside configuration. We're getting into that now.
Yeah.
The redevelopment plans and the sustainability plans and so forth, but it will change, it will evolve. But right now, the backdrop, if you look far enough out from the residents to the south of Island Park and from the lake, you're right, you do see a mall. But this obviously brings it a step closer, and, you know, they were simply concerned that, you know, four stories may be overbearing, you know? But I think, you know, they were satisfied, generally speaking, you know, in terms of the proposal, going back to a three-story.
Sure. Well, I guess my point in asking those questions is that we have to have, you know, think outside of what we are used to at Lakeside Mall, and I don't want to be discouraging developers, you know, that may have their own vision of what they want to have there, you know, going, you know, having a four-story building to a three-story. Doesn't seem like that much of a change to me that's going to impact, you know, residents, I guess, what they're seeing. We have to really think outside of the box here, and I want to encourage all types of investment, and so if, you know, like you said, if we're evolving as far as what our, the city's vision is and what we think we might allow, and I think that that's a good thing, and I hope we continue to do so. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mrs. Arco, anything?
I really, I have, that was my question, was the one that Mr. Shannon asked, is how this plays into the redevelopment of Lakeside. And some of these assisted living, you know, facilities have really given us a good buffer as far as the commercial mall and then the residential area. So I think it's a good plan, and I see this to be successful, and I'm sure that you'll have tenants before you know it, because it's the baby boomers that are looking for someplace to live after they sell their homes. And many of them that live in Sterling Heights want to stay in Sterling Heights. So thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just briefly to the, Mr. McLeod or the petitioner, I'm not sure whoever wants to answer it. So these are actually apartments, it's not an assisted living facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, Mr. Radke.
Through the chair, Mr. McLeod, I was curious about the height change in this building. What do we envision as the future heights of a mixed, if we do a mixed-use community in Lakeside, what would the future heights of those buildings be?
Mr. McLeod.
As I kind of said, we're kind of diving into that right now, and so, you know, through the studies that they were, our consultants, Wade Trim, are going to be performing along with the city, that will ultimately be determined. I mean, what will be viable and what will be acceptable, you know, those will have to meet in the middle. And so whether that's three stories, whether that's four stories, five, six, seven, it remains unknown at this point. So it's a matter of, you know, where that height is also located. So if it's closer to Hall Road, taller buildings may be more tolerated to the residential to the south than if it's located further to the south in Lakeside. So it's a matter of where it's going to be placed, what the type of use is going to be, what the building architecture is going to be, the overall design aesthetic, and the overall physical height of the building. But as of right now, we don't have a described height, and I would imagine ultimately you would have some form of stepped height provision within the districts that would ultimately make up Lakeside, but that's just kind of my perception of it. But like I said, we're just diving into that now. As we come into the next month or two, we'll probably have a much more detailed description of what those height limitations may be.
Well, I guess I'm just curious, because I went driving to look at this lot the other day, because I happened to be in the Lakeside area, and I was thinking about the future of Lakeside. And are most of the buildings, the senior buildings and the apartments around there three stories? Is that kind of the maximum height of the rest of the buildings that surround there? Are there any four-story buildings in that area?
On the immediate circle, they're essentially all three stories.
Right.
As you move off the circle, more towards haze, there are several buildings that are taller than three stories. And that was one of the great debates at the Planning Commission, was not only, you know, what's the Lakeside vision, but also what is some of the surrounding buildings? We do have some buildings out there that are much taller than three stories. And that was kind of the pro and con that was going on with the Planning Commission's debate. So ultimately, I think the applicant saw that, you know, the Planning Commission was somewhat split on it at a four-story. The residents were obviously opposed to a four-story. So I think in a goodwill gesture... four-story, so I think in a goodwill gesture, I think the applicant made a three-story application work while still obtaining the, the number of units that were necessary to make it economically viable. So, at this point, I think it's a win-win, but ultimately, will there be buildings out there that are taller than three stories? That very well may be the case.
I just, to me, I guess, overall, I think about the future of Lakeside, what we have to do there, and I think that the entire council agrees with me, we are really planning for the future of that, that property, and I'm worried, I guess, about residents nearby. I know that there is a proposal for Lakeside Park, which, which failed, and now we have dumbfounded developer on a building on the ring there. I, and I kind of just worry, I guess, about the future of the mall and the redevelopment, because if we're doing the same old thing yet again, I feel like we're not going to properly redevelop Lakeside for the future of our city. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to the petitioner, this is going to be a senior living facility. Can you let the residents at home know exactly what that's going to consist of? I see that it's going to be a one and two-bedroom, they'll each have their own kitchenette, dining area. Will there be any common areas for the seniors?
It will be a senior living apartment building, and we are planning on, we have the option of putting a kitchen and dining room in there, but as far as doctors being in there and nurses and stuff like that, no. Strictly apartments, independent living.
And no common library, game rooms, or anything like that would be offered?
Oh, yeah. We're planning on putting a community room in there, a kitchen and dining, possibly. We're thinking of that, which we mentioned to Mr. McLeod, and also maybe little, maybe a exercise room, TV room, stuff like that. But it's strictly independent.
Very good. Thank you very much. It sounds like it's going to be a very nice facility.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. I want to thank the petitioner for working with the residents and trying to, you know, come to a resolution on this. I think we are very conscious of Lakeside Mall, it's our single biggest question mark, I guess you would say. What's going to happen with the mall? Where's the market going to go? And, and we're very conscious of what needs to be developed there, or what, that something needs to be developed there that will be sustainable for a very long time. So, I'm hopeful that this project will work for you and that it will, will work and play a part in, in the overall redevelopment of Lakeside Mall over the next coming decade or more. So, without any further discussion on this item, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is, good luck, we'll, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction to consider an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Sections 218 and 219 of the City Code to conform the listing of, to conform the listing of administrative officers to the Confirmed Administrative Code and Plan. Presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. The city's code requires that the city manager periodically file an administrative code and plan along with an organizational chart setting forth the city's departmental organization duties and functions of the administrative officers. Excuse me. Periodically, the positions set forth in the administrative code and plan change due to restructuring, position elimination, or sometimes position creation. You may recall when we were going through the Great Recession and really massive restructuring in the organization, the plans that were set forth then in the administrative code were very significant. However, of more recent, the changes have been relatively minor, and that's the case this evening as well. There are really only four changes, and I'll highlight them briefly. The duties of the former risk manager have been absorbed into the Human Resources Division and assigned to the Assistant City Manager and Risk Management Coordinator. Consequently, the combined city clerk and risk manager administrative officer title is being renamed to city clerk only to reflect this change. Secondly, the duties of the facility's maintenance manager have been transferred from the building official to the purchasing manager, in large part so that the building official can focus on more increased construction activity throughout the community. This transition of duties necessitates the renaming of the former building official slash facility maintenance manager to building official only. The former administrative officer title of purchasing manager thus has to be renamed to purchasing and facilities maintenance manager. And thirdly, the duties of the city development manager have been absorbed by the city planner. This necessitates that the combined position be renamed city planner slash city development manager. And lastly, the city has added the new administrative officer position of human resources and benefits manager. The duties of this position are reflected in the code before you this evening. The code also reflects the required job description changes that go along with these title changes, and they're represented in the plan. Since 2011, the city has reduced the number of administrators from 27 to 19, saving approximately $1.2 million annually in wage and benefit costs. And so, with the above in mind, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve the revised administrative code and plan before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Anyone out there who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Suggested action number one, resolve to confirm the city manager's administrative code and plan effective June 5, 2018, and suggested action number two, resolve to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Subsections 2 through 18 and 2 through 19 of the City Code to conform to the listing of administrative officers to the administrative code and plan.
Support.
Okay, we have to-
Separate them?
We have to take these items one at a time. So, do, can we-
Let's start, let me, can I amend my-
Yeah, just-
-motion? Let's just start over. Suggested action number one, resolve to confirm the city manager's administrative code and plan effective June 5, 2018. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mayor Protem Sarowski?
Um, no, I think this is, it's pretty self-explanatory. We are absorbing some positions, we're saving some money. I think that that's very admirable. The duties have been reassigned. I do have a question to the city manager through the, through the chair, and that's, Mr. Vanderpoel, is, how is that going as far as the duty is being absorbed? Has there been any issues? Has it been pretty seamless?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
I would expect it is, but I'm asking.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sarowski, it is going very well. Our succession plan has worked very well. In almost all these cases, there, there has been overlap training. For example, with the human resources and benefits manager, that individual was working side by side with Mr. Blessed and certainly Mr. Bahorski, and so that transition went very well. The same is true for the city clerk and the city planner and so on. So, all in all, this reorganization has went, I think, very well.
Okay, very good. So, that's all I have. Nothing further.
All right, counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mayor Protem Sarowski?
Suggested action number two, resolve to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Articles 2, Subsection 2 through 18 and 2 through 19 of the City Code to conform to the listing of administrative officers to the administrative code and plan.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Jefferson?
I'd like to find out more about item number K to adopt the resolution, urging action by Michigan legislation and Governor Snyder to enact stricter regulations and enforcement on the allowable truck weight limits to protect major roads and highways. What would be the allowable, acceptable weight limit that we're urging them to, to enact? Because I think it's 80,000 pounds now spread out between the axles. So, what would be the appropriate allowable weight limit? And how are we going to go about enforcing that since we don't have weigh stations along our roads here in southeast of Michigan or throughout Michigan? So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discuss, with no discussion, of course, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a consideration item to consider an amendment to a conditional rezoning agreement to allow for a 7,349 square foot expansion of the existing commercial building and extend the allowable time for development of property situated on the north side of 18 Mile Road, east of Dequender Road in Section 7, case number PZ16-1149. We have a presentation from our newly minted city planner slash city development manager, Chris McLeod, Mr. McLeod.
I don't want to write that out every time.
You're paid the same, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel, and Mr. Vanderpoel. Before you tonight is the, what's being considered the first amendment to the conditional rezoning agreement that originally was case number PZ16-1149, which granted a conditional rezoning to, of the site from C2, which is our shopping center district, to our C3, general business district, for the redevelopment of the former Kmart site located at the northeast corner of 18 Mile Road and Dequender. It would allow for a new Kroger to be located on the west side of the facility, as well as the renovation of the remaining existing portion of the shopping center, as well as the development of a new gasoline service station at the, kind of the southeast corner of the overall development site. Since that time, the applicant had, had received site plan approval, had not dove into engineering quite at that point, and then some, due to some reconfigurations and so forth, the proposal is now back in front of you for a couple of small amendments. One being, at the very east side of the building, they would like to enlarge that portion of the building to accommodate a new user that they found for a fitness facility. And then the second major amendment to the conditional rezoning agreement would be the timelines. We're already kind of pressing the, the timeline limits within the original conditional rezoning agreement, so the applicant has asked to extend those timelines themselves. Let me show you what that would actually represent. So, this is the overall site layout plan. The general configuration remains largely the same as the existing facility, as well as what was originally proposed, but as you can see here, the Kroger facility would be located on the west end of the facility, and then the proposed Edge Fitness, that's the fitness user, that's the one prompting the additional square footage, as noted in your agenda statement. Press the building further to the east. The initial building, stop that building a little further to the west, if you will. The applicant's slightly revised landscaping plans to include, to modify some of the landscaping varieties within the actual landscape plan itself, but you'll see a brand-new center essentially once all said and done with this facility. Just to refresh your memories, there was a couple of minor changes due to Kroger branding, but this is the facade for the renewed Kroger that will be located on that, that facility, and then this would be the Edge Fitness Club facility located at the far east end of the facility itself. And then in terms of the revised timeline, this is what it would indicate. For Phase 1, which is essentially the entire site other than the fitness user, would be a June 5, 2019 for site plan approval, June 21, 2020 for obtaining a building permit, and then complete construction by February 22, 2021. Representatives are here, it's my understanding, talking with them, that their actual schedule that they're looking to accomplish is much more aggressive than that, but as always, everyone likes to build the cushion in terms of their building schedules. And then Phase 2, which would be the actual Edge Fitness, those project out a little bit further, but again, those would be amendments to the actual timeline of the conditional rezoning agreement itself. So, the applicant has worked with city staff and city legal council to draft that amendment. It's here tonight, should council decide to move forward with it. This is simply a consideration, so it'd only take one action by council to actually approve it if you felt, felt it appropriate. So, with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Petitioner, is a petitioner here would like to make any, or make any statements? Not required. Can wait for questions if you'd like, but...
Hello, counsel and Mr. Mayor. I'm Tom Ross, I'm with Kroger Real Estate, actually the Kroger Company, here tonight to just really answer any questions you may have. Ask for your support, and I guess I should say, we're at 40399 Grand River Avenue, Novi, Michigan.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll ask for discussion or anything from the audience, then when the council deliberates, we'll, we'll call you up if we have any questions, all right? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to approve the first amendment to the conditional rezoning agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and SLM Windmill LP, case number PZ16-1149, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Zarco?
Um, thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I want to thank Kroger for redeveloping that whole parcel. But, through the chair to Mr. Ross, my biggest concern is what's going to happen to the existing Kroger building, and the reason why I say that is, in being in Sterling Heights for 40 years, I've watched other grocery stores relocate and then actually pay rent to keep that facility empty, so there's a non-compete. So, I just wonder what your plans are for the existing building right now. That's my biggest concern.
Sure. We, we plan to do something with it as soon as possible. We actually own that building, we don't want to sit there and pay for a dead store, storefront, so we would like to find a user for that as soon as possible upon moving to our new facility.
Thank you. No further questions. Good luck.
Counsel, anyone else?
I just want to confirm, I'm sorry, yes, Mayor Taylor, sorry. I just want to confirm that you're looking at getting this building up and running by 2020, 2021, correct?
Kroger would, would hope to be faster than that.
Okay, yeah, I would hope so.
We're certainly working that way.
Okay, very good. Okay, and, because of course, there was a VGs that was over to that general area, and that is not up and running right now, so we need something in that area. So, it looks very nice, I drive by there almost every day.
Well, we hope to bring our flagship to that spot.
Oh, very good. We look forward to seeing it. Thank you so much. No further questions.
Counsel, anyone else? No, I don't have any, any real comments or questions. I think it was addressed before. This is, I think, a reasonable request, and I'm happy to support it, and, you know, wish you guys good luck, and the sooner the better for us, obviously, because we get a lot of questions about, about, as Mrs. Zarco said, both what's going to happen to the existing and when's the new one coming. So, you know, obviously, we're anticipating and looking forward to it, and I think it's going to really brighten up that corner. So, thank you. With no further discussion, then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider adoption of a resolution to petition for the extension and improvement of facilities serving the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain, Drainage District. We have a presentation from our Public Works Director, Michael Moore. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mayor, council, city attorney, and residents. I'd briefly like to update you on the potential expansion of sanitary assets that OMID is seeking to acquire operation control over from GLWA. First, I'll start off with some background. The Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain, Drainage District, or OMID, is made up of 23 McComb County and Oakland County municipalities, whose wastewater is collected and transported via treatment through a large interceptor that runs through both counties. The city of Sterling Heights is a member of OMID. In 2009, OMID purchased a portion of the city of Detroit's sanitary sewer infrastructure situated north of 8 Mile. The facilities located south of 8 Mile Road continue to be owned by the city of Detroit, but are operated by the Great Lakes Water Authority, or GLWA, through a separate lease and operations agreement. These facilities are known as the Northeast Pump Station and North Interceptor East Arm. You can see from this map here, here's some of the underground and this slide. I'll zoom in, and the areas in question, or the areas in discussion tonight are the green areas, where the Northeast Pump Station is here, just south of 8 Mile. Here's Grash at running in, and again, this is, the green area is what we're talking about this evening, the North Interceptor- Interceptor East Arm. So the map shown here identifies these facilities, which extend from Eight Mile Road and Hoover to the DWSD wastewater treatment plant in Detroit. Except for the portion of the interceptor arm located south of Mack Avenue and Grashit, OMID is the only customer of GLWA using these facilities. As such, GLWA bills 100% of the cost to repair, maintain, and operate these facilities to OMID, which in turn bills the member municipalities that contribute wastewater to the interceptor. A recent inspection by GLWA has determined that these facilities are reportedly in need of imminent repairs and upgrades that are necessary to ensure proper functioning and to extend their useful life. The inspection was performed in four different segments shown here. You can see in red and green, and then also here in orange and blue, with repairs and upgrades estimated to cost between $50 and $70 million. If the GLWA were to undertake these repairs, the cost in the form of finance bond payments and GLWA fees would be passed on to OMID. OMID would then apportion these charges to its customers, including the mid, which also includes Sterling Heights. Additionally, GLWA bills OMID approximately $10 million annually to operate and maintain these facilities, which OMID also portions part of this cost to mid and to Sterling Heights. The OMID Board believes there is an opportunity for potential cost savings and efficiencies by having OMID assume full and direct responsibility for the admin, management, operation, maintenance, and improvements to these facilities through an agreement with GLWA. On February 27, 2018, OMID sent a letter to GLWA to formally express its desire to move forward concerning the ownership and/or operational control of these assets. OMID believes that the combined credit ratings of Macomb County and Oakland County will allow it to obtain a better interest rate than GLWA on the sale of the bonds required to finance repairs to these facilities, which would result in a net savings to OMID customers. Additionally, GLWA's fees for obtaining these bonds would no longer be charged to OMID for the project. OMID also believes there are potential savings of approximately $1 million per year over a 25-year bond period compared to what would be charged to OMID if GLWA were to undertake the repairs to the facilities and pass the costs on. In addition, OMID believes that it can operate and maintain these facilities for approximately $6 million per year, which could potentially save OMID ratepayers a total of $3.5 to $4.5 million annually in operation and maintenance charges. These savings would then be passed on to the ratepayers of each community, making up the OMID, which includes mid and Sterling Heights. To accomplish the objective of having OMID effectuate the repairs to the facilities, two communities must petition to have OMID seek to introduce, include these facilities as part of the existing Chapter 21 OMID Drainage District. Upon successful passage of the petition, an augmented board consisting of the current OMID Board and the chairperson and finance person of the County Board of Commissioners from both counties would then conduct a feasibility study and make a tentative determination of the public corporations to be assessed. The augmented board would then hold a second public meeting with notice to all communities to make a final determination on these issues. If approved, all future decisions will be made by the current OMID Board. As Sterling Heights is the largest mid member and mid is OMID's largest customer, OMID has approached Sterling Heights to issue the required resolution and petition in Macomb County. A similar request is being made to the city of Waterford in Oakland County for action in June. Brian Baker, the Chief Deputy Public Works Commissioner for Macomb County, is here to answer any questions related to the topic. Mayor Taylor, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Mr. Baker, you want to comment or wait for questions? Sounds good. Any, any comments, any, anything? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Suggested action A, adopt the resolution approving the petition to extend and improve the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain pursuant to Section 535 of Chapter 21 of the Michigan Drain Code, for purposes of the construction and repair of the Northeast Sewage Pumping Station and North Interceptor East Arm Project, in order to ensure the continued and uninterrupted transport of wastewater from the OMID Drainage District. And, B, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the petition on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Sarowski.
I do have a couple of questions through the chair to Mr. Moore at this moment. Mr. Moore, so this is supposed to be a cost savings to us if we participate with this. Can you review that one more time for the residents?
Mr. Moore.
So if I, if I back up a little bit, the way it can be financed through OMID instead of through GLWA, it looks to be about a $1 million per year savings over a 25-year period. Additionally, too, if OMID maintains the infrastructure, it appears to be, along with the $1 million savings, about a $3.5 to $4 million savings annually if OMID maintains it. Is that right? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker and Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Okay, so, I guess that's all, that was my question. I'm going to leave it at that for now, thank you.
All right, counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. Moore. I, let me understand this, that the section we're talking about is already owned by OMID, correct?
Mr. Moore.
You know, I'm, I'll, if I could call Mr. Baker, I'm going to, I'm going to say no, it's not owned by OMID. It's owned by GLWA, but I think he could probably better clarify some of that. That's right.
Mr. Baker confirming that GLWA owns it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, technically, the city of Detroit owns it, GLWA leases it, but OMID does not own it or operate it currently.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, counsel, anyone else? Just, Mr. Baker, if you could, I have a couple, couple questions, maybe not so many, not, maybe not too much, too much of your time. Can you explain, and welcome back, good to have you back, thank you.
Thank you.
You are our local expert on all matters, infrastructure and water. Can you explain, where is the million dollars in savings coming from? So as it's, as I understand it, the city of Detroit owns it, GLWA leases it and maintains it, GLWA then passes on cost to OMID, OMID passes on cost to mid, mid passes on cost to the city. So are we talking about just removing a layer of bureaucracy and that's where the save, where exactly does the operational savings come from?
So, it's a good question. There's two components of it. First, we're going to save money by OMID operating, and that's the good news. The bad news is, there's about $50 to $70 million of work that needs to be done. If GLWA does that work, it's going to cost us more money. We can do it for cheaper. And the two components are on the debt. If we borrow a bond for $50 to $70 million, OMID, using Oakland County, Macomb County's full-fledged, full pledge faith and credit, they can sell the bond for much lower than GLWA does. And GLWA doesn't charge us their actual bond costs, even if we, they could get a better deal. They would charge us the average of all of their debt. So that's about a million dollars we think we can, we can save by the bond, by us doing the bond financing as opposed to GLWA. The bigger savings is, to operate this Northeast Pump Station, GLWA currently charges us $10 million a year to operate that. We think we can operate it close to $6 million a year. So we're in discussions right now with GLWA in order to see if we can come to some kind of resolution. Unfortunately, that differential is going to be passed on to other customers, and that's a little bit of the negotiation that we're trying to, to go through at this point.
What is the difference that we could do? How, how can we do it for six versus the GLWA doing it for 10? I mean, what are we talking about?
GLWA is, is including other costs that we don't believe should be solely attributable to the Northeast Pump Station. We think they're charging us costs that everyone else should be paying for.
Okay. And so those costs are not going to just disappear? It's not as if we're just going to be able to operate it more efficiently, and that's where the savings...
Partly that, but mainly, we feel we're getting charged costs that don't rightly belong to that pump station.
So that should, that would be apportioned over other communities? Would that, would it include us as well, but a smaller percentage, or how would that work?
Correct. It would be a common to all charge, roughly, we'd be 20% of that common. We'd be saving 80% of it, 20% we'd still be paying.
Okay. And procedurally, the city of Sterling Heights is considering this tonight. My understanding is that no other mid, no other Macomb County OMID member needs to take this action up if one takes it up. Is that correct?
Two communities have to take it up. So, one in Macomb has, has been asked, and Public Works Commissioner Candace Miller requested that Sterling Heights do it, you guys are the largest customer. And there's one Oakland County community, Waterford, who is, who will be taking it up as well. So there's two parallel tracks for each of the, each community in each of the counties to ask for the petition, for the state to consider the petition, and then it would go from there. And if we get a favorable negotiation with GLWA, we'll continue. If we don't, then there's no harm, no foul, no foul would be involved, so.
Okay. And are you, do you have personal knowledge that Waterford is taking it up? Do they have it on their agenda, or...
I've heard it's scheduled in, during this month.
Okay. All right, very good. One other question for you. You refer to us as, I assume, OMID, right? And you, then you refer to the GLWA, of which you are a member.
Correct.
How does that affect you personally, and, you know, with you being kind of on both sides of the...
Well, I'm not certainly negotiating the deal. I have recused myself from any of those meetings. I'm certainly on the GLWA Board. Well, I will make sure GLWA and the OMID get a good deal. Candace Miller is technically the member of the OMID Board.
Okay. All right, fair enough. I'm, I'm satisfied, I think that this is a good idea, worth pursuing, and I appreciate your, your time and coming here and clarifying it, I guess, to the best, the best we can. It's still a complicated issue and not something that the average...
The good thing is with, as Mr. Moore alluded to, if we save a million dollars on the debt per year, and we save, let's say, $4 million on the operation of the pump station, that's $5 million. Sterling Heights' share of that is 20%. So theoretically, you could save a million dollars a year.
Right. That would be great. And, but it's, we're, we're still talking about additional spending that, that we have to take on as, but, but it has to be done, one way or the other. This infrastructure is failing and has to...
It's only our flow, and we'd rather control our own destiny than GLWA, so.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Baker.
Excuse me. Mayor Taylor?
Yeah, Mrs. Zarco.
I, go just a little farther. What happened, through the chair to Mr. Baker, what happens if Waterford doesn't go along with this and we're the only ones that do? Does it fall apart then? Or do we still continue?
If for some reason War, or Waterford didn't, they would seek another Oakland County community.
Okay.
And it could be technically two Macomb County communities, it just made sense to have one in each county.
Thank you, and I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Radke.
I was just curious, the OMID Board is the city agricultural director, the public works commissioner of Macomb County, and the water resources commissioner of Oakland County?
Correct.
Who man, who would manage the project? Would it be Oakland County or Macomb?
Oakland is the secretary of the project currently.
It's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? One last shot? Okay, if not, with no further, thank you, Mr. Baker, very much. With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider nominations to city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have a number of appointments that need to be made. These are broken up into two agenda items. The first is the, those boards and commissions that require the two-step nomination and appointment process, and we will take these in order. The first is Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is, has three vacancies. There are three members of the Planning Commission who request reappointment. The power of appointment rests with the mayor, and I would appoint Jeff Garapi, Stefano Militello, and Donald Miller to the Planning Commission, all four terms ending on June 30, 2021. If there's a council member that will please make that motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Resolve to nominate, can I do all three at once? Okay. Resolve to nominate Jeff Garapi, Stefano Militello, and Donald Miller for consideration as an appointee to the Planning Commission at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Code Appeals. This has one opening, and it is Terry Meisel, who's requesting reappointment. This is a, a board that power of appointment rests with the city council. Is there a council member who'd like to make this nomination?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to nominate Terry Meisel for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Code Appeals at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordinance Appeals. These, this board has two openings. Both members, Robert Irvin and Julie Hoff Windhorst, are requesting reappointment. Power of appointment rests with the city council. Is there a member who'd like to make the appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Nomination, I should say. Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Okay, this is for code appeals? Nope, I'm sorry, ordinance appeals, excuse me. And this is resolve to nominate both Robert Irvin and Julie Hoff Windhorst for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals to 19, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next is the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2. These, there are two vacancies. These are members also that are requesting reappointment. We have Michael Stickney and Brian Cole, power rests with the city council. Is there a nomination?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to nominate Michael Stickney and Brian Cole for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Review. Two members, Richard Golpe and Mona Yacine, who are requesting reappointment by the city council. Is there a nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Resolve to, to nominate Richard Golpe and Mona Yacine for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Review at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Pension Board for Police and Fire. One member, Robert Malzek, is requesting reappointment by the city council. City council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to nominate Robert Malzek for consideration as an appoint, as an appointee to the Police and Fire Pension Board at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
So, it's been moved and supported. With any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Two members, Stefano Militello and Pashka Weekai, are requesting reappointment by the city council. Is there a nomination, counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to nominate Pashka Weekai and Leonard Reinowski for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the June 19, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I have no discussion.
Any discussion from the council?
Give me one second, so I can look at it. Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs., Mrs. Schmidt, if I could ask, Stefano Militello's been, requested reappointment, Leonard Reinowski is the nominated member, is, has, has Mr. Reinowski, I, I, I want to check to see...
Mayor Taylor, this is the liaison from the Planning Commission to...
Correct.
To the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Militello has been the liaison for many years, and I was just, wanted to give someone else the opportunity to take that position, to be the liaison. Mr. Reinowski did request the appointment.
That's, that's all I was asking. I was, I was trying to find on the Zoning Board of Appeals had Mr. Reinowski requested that. If you've, if you've confirmed that, I appreciate you telling me that. Okay. With, with no, any further discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me back to where I was. I think that concludes that. My e-packet has disappeared. So bear with me one moment. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Consideration 9D, to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have a number of appointments again. We'll start with the Corridor Improvement Authority. This is a mayoral appointment, and the current member, Michael DiAgostini, is requesting reappointment to a term ending June 30th, 2022. I'd ask that a council member make that appointment.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint Michael DiAgostini to the Corridor Improvement Authority to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority. This member, Catherine Giles, is requesting reappointment. This is a mayoral appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2024, and I request that Catherine Giles be reappointed. Is there a council member who'll make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
On the recommendation of the mayor, resolve to appoint Catherine Giles to the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority to a term ending June 30th, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'm kind of concerned about this appointment. Ms. Giles didn't make any of the meetings of the last year of the Corridor Improvement Authority.
Okay. Me.
I'm sorry, the, sorry, the economic development, I'm looking at this, I'm sorry. What we're on, right?
Yes, we are on economic...
We had two absences.
Okay. Let me, let me pull this up.
You know, I'm all for putting people on committees, but if they can't attend the meetings, I think it's maybe some time for a different appointee.
Right. So I'm pulling this up. Ms. Giles was absent from both meetings. One was excused, one was not excused. If you'd like, I would, what I can do is I will, we can postpone this item. I'll contact Ms. Giles, confirm with her that she's still, she's requested reappointment, and I'll find out the reason for her absences, and if she can commit to making sure she's at these, and if that would satisfy you, Mr. Radke, and we can postpone this to the June 19th meeting. So, I'm sorry, who made the motion? Mrs. Zarco?
Yeah. So I will rescind my motion.
Okay. And then I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the June 19th, 2018 council meeting.
Resolve to appoint, to postpone the appointment of the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority member to the June 19th, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Elected Officials Compensation Commission. This is Dale Demming, and he is requesting reappointment. This is a mayoral appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2025. Is there a council member who would make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Dale Demming to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Ethnic Community Committee. There are five openings. Four members are requesting reappointment to a term ending June 30th, 2021. I would like it if a council member could make the appointments for Abbott Basal, Cosetta Elzahenny, Susan Katula, and Iqbal Singh.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Abbott Basal, Cosetta Elzahenny, Susan Katula, and Iqbal Singh to the Ethnic Community Committee to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is one unexpired term with an expiration of June 30th, 2019, that I would appreciate if a member of the council could make a motion to postpone, to give me a little more time to follow up with interested candidates to the June 19th, 2018 council meeting.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Local Development Finance Authority. There is one vacancy, and it's a term of Richard Kincaid, who is not requesting reappointment for the same reason as the last. I would request a postponement to the June, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the June 19th, 2018 council meeting.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next board is a council appointment. This is the Arts Commission. There are two vacancies. Their members, Jeannie Shabath and Jasmine Early, are requesting reappointment to a term ending June 30th, 2022. Council, is there a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Jeannie Shabath and Brittany Kosky to the Arts Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Beautification Commission. There are four vacancies, three members seeking reappointment, and one opening, all to a term ending June 30th, 2021. Council, are there any nominate, or are there any appointments to the Beautification Commission?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Gary Eisen, Stephen Duncan, Brittany Kosky to the Beautification Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That leaves one opening on the Beautification Commission. Does anyone have a appointment? If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone to the June 19th, 2018 city council meeting.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Citizens Advisory Committee, Community Development Block Grant. There are, I believe, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
One more on the other page.
Eight.
Oh, eight.
Seven?
No, there's seven. I counted, Jeannie, that's number seven, I think. So seven openings. Janet Bartelo, Erica Stiglia, Cosetta Elzahenny, Judith Foley, Joanne Paraventi, Grace Pedri, and Jeannie Shabath. This is a city council appointment, and all have a term ending June 30th, 2019. Is there a council member who'd like to make these appointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Resolve to appoint, I'll go through the list here, Janet Bartelo, Erica Stiglia, Cosetta Elzahenny, Judith Foley, Joanne Paraventi, Grace Pedri, and Jeannie Shabath. Get to the page. To the Citizens Advisory Committee to a term ending June 30th, 2019, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'm just curious about this appointment. I look at all the names on here, and a lot of these folks serve in a lot of different areas in the city. I've talked with some candidates on the list who have not been appointed to any committees. Some of them have waited to be appointed to any committees for several years now. And I talked to one interested candidate. I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to maybe circulate a few more people into some of these committees, excluding this one? Because I think that we just reappoint, 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 it kind of stifles people wanting to get involved in the city. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else on council? My personal feeling is that, you know, when, when individuals volunteer for a board, I'm happy to have them continue to serve on that board as long as I think that they're doing a good job, as long as I think they're committed. And if there's an individual that you think maybe is on a number of commissions and might volunteer to step off of one commission in order to allow another person an opportunity to volunteer, I think that that's probably, that probably would be acceptable to that person if, if the right opportunity presented itself, and if, you know, if they were, if they were asked. But barring anything like that, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable reappointing everybody tonight to this, to this Citizens Advisory Commission. It's one of the, it's one of the shorter terms, and so if there is the opportunity for somebody else to want to serve, that, that'll come up relatively quickly. So I'm comfortable, and without any further discussion from the city council members, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Next on the agenda tonight is the Historical Commission. There are four openings, and it appears that two are requesting reappointment, and two are not requesting reappointment. These are city council appointments that end, with the term ending in June, on June 30th, 2021. Is there a council member who'd like to make any appointments to the Historical Commission?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint John Connor and Douglas Harvey. Let me get to where we're going here. To the, just lost my place. There we go, to the Historical Commission. To a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That leaves two openings on the, excuse me, Historical Commission. Is there anyone who has another appointment to this board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to postpone to the June 19th, 2018 city council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The, next is the Library Board of Trustees. This is an open seat with nobody seeking reappointment. It's a city council appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2021. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make an appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Shirley Cozart to the Library Board of Trustees to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last is the Solid Waste Commission. Two openings. Henrietta Bishewski and Wayne Davis are seeking reappointment by the city council to terms ending on June 30th, 2021. Is there a council member who'd like to make this appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint Henrietta Bishewski and Wayne Davis to the, least, Solid Waste Management Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That completes that agenda item. Move on now to Communications from Citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item that was not contained on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Anybody notice what happened the last few weeks here in this country? I did. This is the only place where people can offend people and still keep their positions. Even the mayor of Warren, he might have a sketchy past, but he wasn't letting a paid representative offend people in his community. That lady, she was on her way to being fired, and she resigned. Our mayor, welcome to people here. Glad to have you Californians here in our community, but I will let a paid representative offend you, and I won't do anything about it. And the rest of you, the same deal. And you folks know who I'm talking about. And tonight, you reappointed him to the Planning Commission. If anybody didn't think I was going to talk about that, you lost a bet on that one. Mr. Vanderpoel, speaking of betting, the Supreme Court now has legislated gambling to go throughout the states. Have you and the city clerk began making ordinance procedures on that? Because within 90 days, we have football season, and by the Super Bowl, which is February, I believe there will be legal wagering going on here in Sterling Heights. So it's time to get that ordinance underway, because I wouldn't want Nate Shannon and Mrs. Zarco to be surprised on what the state does. Speaking of Nate Shannon, I would like to ask you a question. How are you advising people on the RTA here in Sterling? How would they vote on the RTA here in Sterling Heights? Just because it's important, it might not be the best for Macomb County, but for Sterling Heights, it's a good deal, just because we're leaning so much onto manufacturing. We just approved a deal for Kroger to be at 18 in the Quinter. There's no buses going to 18 in the Quinter. There's no buses going east or west on, no part of Sterling Heights beyond 15 Mile Road.[1607.73] We only got the Van Dyke bus near there, so people will be walking from Van Dyke to DeQuinter. I don't know. Have you ever taken that walk in, let's say, December? It's pretty cool out. So we need you to advise us on how to do that and know your experts haven't probably went over that. Mayor Taylor, you can advise him, and he can tell us how it goes. That's your expert. Liz Sirovsky, a question for you. I'm a longtime resident of that Lakeside Mall area. How many residents are going into that area as we discussed tonight? New area, new residents moving into that area? Will there be expansions on Hayes, Shaner, Canal, 19 Mile Road? Because if anybody's been over there during Christmas season when it added people, it's an extra stress on those roads and a inconvenience for those people going in that area, through that area. Michael Radke, you're our police guy. What are you doing to ensure that our police reside here in Sterling Heights? That would help out with the crime rate. Are you seeking some kind of legislation for that? Or are you bringing that up to the council? Or are you giving, seeking to give the policemen incentives to move into Sterling Heights, to stay in Sterling Heights, would they get some kind of incentive? And also, Mike, are you seeking with the police chief about having us have a green light program at our gas stations, party stores, and such? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, yes. Welcome.
My name is Dee Perry. I'm a resident of Sterling Heights. I live right down here at Utica and Van Dyke. About two months ago, one of my dogs was killed and another one was mauled by a coyote. And it's quite an epidemic in my area. I called the police, I called animal control, I called the DNR. I got called back because I was Facebook stalked by the Sterling Heights Police Department on my situation, because I was looking for somebody to exterminate them. The sergeant was a wonderful man, and he said he was going to try to get the city to come out and start live trapping them. Because here, this is just, let me get them going. This is just a couple days ago, going down Utica, right at Van Dyke. If you want to see the two coyotes, which are about this big. I currently have a den of them, about eight or 10 of them, living in my yard, because the sergeant of police offered to have them live trapped. But, is city attorney here? She rescinded that and made the sergeant of police call me back and tell me the city wasn't going to do it. I currently have a den. At nighttime, approximately 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, they do roll call 20 feet outside my back door, and you can hear about eight or 10 of them sounding off. If you shine a spotlight at my backyard, they line my property. I can't go outside not being weaponized to my own car. I can't let my grandchildren go outside it in the evening. I'm terrified that they're going to come and do something worse. I have to protect my dogs. We have people at 18 and Shaner, broad daylight, they're walking their dogs, and the coyotes are getting brazen. They're attacking the dog between her legs. They're attacking them over at 15 and DeQuinter. They're all around. I'm a member of about 30 Facebook groups. We're about probably 100,000 strong here in Sterling Heights, who talk about this situation that's going on, and we can't get anybody here in, in our council to discuss it and to help us. And I, I don't know what else to do but to come here and try to talk to you fine people, to try to get some help. I can't continuously live on my property and be told by the, the police dispatcher that as a coyote sits on my front porch, that nobody's coming to help me, because her exact words were, "We have invaded their territory." That's what she told me on the phone. As the coyote had just killed my dog, sat on my front porch. Because he came to my house for breakfast, he came back for dinner. And that's what our police department had to say to me. And that's all I have to say about this situation. I'm looking for help. A lot of our, our residents in Sterling Heights are looking for help, and it seems like everybody here is ignoring this situation. It needs to be brought to light. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. If you would, please leave your name and your contact information with our city clerk before you leave, and we will get a response for you within the next day or two at the, at the most. So make sure you leave that with her. She's got a pen and paper up there, so before you leave, leave that with her. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not? I'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything you can say about the coyote issue?
Well, Mayor, this is a common problem in southeastern Michigan. A lot of cities are reporting coyote sightings. The DNR, the McComb Health Department, and any local control agency, including municipalities, do not recommend live trapping coyotes. It's been a longstanding practice. It's dangerous to, to try to live trap them. It could be dangerous to encourage residents to do so. So for all those reasons, live trapping is not recommended. However, having said that, there are a number of agencies that can help, and we'd be happy to perhaps coordinate some action with those entities, and we'll follow up with you accordingly as the mayor suggested. And Mayor, I'd be happy to respond to any other comments made this evening if the city council so desires.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski.
We have one item tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, open it up to any reports, new business, unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just wanted to talk about briefly, a couple things. One, to, to Mr. Jefferson, I, I fully agree the, I wish our police could live in Sterling Heights. There's a state law that allows them to live within, I believe, Mr. Vanderpool, it's 20 miles from the city's borders. We can't change that at the local level, but I think that that law is terrible. I think all of our city employees should live in the city. That's my personal philosophy on that. I also wanted to talk about a hit and run accident that happened last Thursday. I have a, a news release from the Sterling Heights Police here that says a gentleman was hit on his bicycle on Maple Lane, just south of Volpe Drive, by a car. They found a piece of mirror and some other stuff on the sidewalk, looks like he was clipped. And when the police got there, he seemed to be having a concussion, had injury, and couldn't really describe what had happened. One of my problems with Maple Lane, I have a picture here of Maple Lane from my colleagues, I'm sure you guys know it, but just in case. There's no sidewalk on either side of Maple Lane, south of Volpe Drive. And so this bicyclist was forced to drive either on the shoulder or in the street because there is nowhere for him to go as a pedestrian. And one thing we have in Sterling Heights is we have pretty good sidewalk coverage, but there are definite areas that we, we could do better. Maple Lane is one of them, Shaner is one of them. The south side of, sorry, north side of 14 Mile Road has no sidewalk. Off the top of my head, 17 Mile between Van Dyke and Mount Road has no sidewalk on either side. It's impossible to traverse. And I hate to see situations like this, this, this gentleman is in intensive care, because people aren't paying attention, or they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, or there's just bikes in the street. I think we can do better, and I think we need to, we need to put together a plan to improve our sidewalk coverage, because these accidents are going to happen, and they continue to happen until we do something about it. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? Anything tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Sirovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Riska. We will adjourn into closed session, and we may be returning. Okay. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. We will adjourn into closed session, and we may be returning.